Mayor's report. Trent Goss and Melody Thigman are treasurer and city clerk, respectively. They are off at OML training for clerks and treasurers today, so Trent asked me to share that with the council. They had the Lieutenant Governor's Turkey Hunt last week, and I'm told I wasn't able to attend, but I'm told everything went very well and successful hunt, but also some successful discussions that took place, so that was good. For those of you that don't know, if you ever have anything that I do have a regular morning show on K, it'll be on Tuesdays every week. If ever there's anything that you think needs to be shared with the public, I'd be happy to share that there. And for all you listeners out there, it's city business. If you want to hear what's going on after the council meetings and that kind of stuff, you can tune in. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to try to answer any questions.
Kelly, I don't have a question, but I have a comment saying about what's going on in Alba. This morning, one of the Alba -- citizen of Alba ran in the Boston Marathon.
Yeah.
And Luis Chavez, and he ended up 50th out of something like 1,300 people. Men, just the men. And he ended up 50th, so that'd be something to brag about on your show.
Yeah. And you know him pretty well, huh?
I do, quite well.
Yeah, I saw that. And I see him running all the time.
Yes.
So I guess to run that far, you'd have to run all the time.
And in the rain and the cold day up there, and that's what he was hoping wasn't going to happen.
Well, Joe Don, City Business Manager's report.
I'll talk about the finance report first. Our general fund through the month of March has collected about $3.9 million from operations, and we've had about $600,000 transferred in for other funds. Operational collections right now are slightly exceeding collections from last year. We're about 3% up from FY 2016, 2017. There's some smaller increases. There's some small increases in franchise tax, collections, police fines, and things like that, but the majority of that would have been from our sales tax. Overall, the expenditures are slightly under projections. We had budgeted approximately five -- if we were expending, according to our budget, we would have expended about $5,683,000. We have actually encumbered or spent $5,624,000. So we're real close on -- real close to budget on that, just slightly under. Personnel services makes up about 2.5 million of that. Transfers out and debt service make up 1.7. The other 1.3 million is made up of other services and supplies and materials. The Alba Utility Authority has collected about $2.3 million through water and sanitation services. The Utility Authority continues to increase from FY 2016, '17. Currently, we are about 16% above where we were this last fiscal year, same time. This increase can be attributed to the rate increase which was put in place in August. If we were collecting money across the board, we'd collect about 70% of our expected revenues. During the same timeframe, the Alba Utility Authority has spent about $2.3 million. These expenditures are about 18% below what expectations were. Of these expenditures, personnel services is 688,000. Materials and supplies, 364. Other services and charges, 292. Capital outlay, 82,000. And debt service at 907,000. Debt service and transfers out, 907,000. Other funds that we have, fiduciary funds we have, such as the airport, cemetery, economic development, collectively, these funds have received about $1.2 million and have spent about $1.2 million. We have expended our capital improvement money in accordance with the plan. Our long-term debt has -- we've made principal payments of $403,000, interest payments at 49. Currently, the city owes across all entities about $5.4 million with payoff dates anywhere from 7/1/19 to 9/15/48. Sales tax, currently, we are about 3.3% above where we were last year, but we're about 8% behind what our expectations were for this year. Utility billing for March, we're about 12% below what we had expected, but we are 12% above what collections were of March 2017. If we examining our well field, we have bailed out for water through March, 254,677 -- 254 million, 677,000 gallons of water. And we have pumped out of the well field 279,339 -- 279 million, 339,000 since July 1. This is a 19% difference. A lot of that line loss is contributing to fire hydrants, water line breaks. Entities that were using water, municipal entities that were using water and not yet metered, a lot of that we are getting cleared up. But that's the reason for the difference. We strive for about a 5% to 10% water loss percentage, and we're at 19% this year. Last year, we were at about 23%. Projects that we've got, right now, the only major project we have going on is our Young Street Water Tank Farm. Currently, we've drawn down about 14% of the loan. It is on schedule. We did add 34 days to the original 245-day completion period. This was to account for time that -- for the time it took to get geotechnical information back, that study done. The upcoming projects we have, the main one that we're looking at right now is the purchase of a new ambulance, and then we're going to have some minor purchases for -- we've got a few mowers and some minor purchases like that to make for our mowing season that should kick off here pretty quick if it starts raining. Overall, we're running pretty close to where we were expecting to be at budget during the budget process. As far as management report would comment about our budget process for 2018, '19, last week, I spent all week, the majority of the week, going through individual departments with department heads and supervisors to see where we might be able to make some cuts. We are about -- when we started the process, we were at about $2.8 million needed to balance the general fund with transfers, that we always transfer money into the general fund from the enterprise fund, but at that time, we only had about $700,000 available for transfer. After we've completed meetings and reevaluated that, we are still needing to transfer about $2.8 million, but we now have about $1.3 million available for transfer. We are still working with revenue projections to see if we can balance that out some and also some more. We will spend some more time looking at expenditures, but we are looking at some other revenue-producing options for the city, one of those being the real water contracts. We've got three real water contracts. One of them was Real Water District 1. Last time it was renewed, it was July 1, 1979. District 3 was '77. District 4 was '92. I have worked through some of the details of the contracts and sent them over to Rick for a legal opinion. He has made some adjustments. There may be a couple of other adjustments we still need to make before sending them to the Real Water District as a proposal, but that should take place here relatively quickly. We did test our sirens and started our monthly siren testing in April. They will be tested on the first Wednesday of every month at around noon, weather permitting. All of our sirens operated properly, except for the one at Oklahoma Boulevard and Lane. There was -- we think that there was some electrical issues where the siren was not getting the command to sound. Everything, as far as the siren was concerned, was operational, it just wasn't getting the signal. They have since corrected that. We did have a water loss audit through DEQ recently, and they concluded the same as what I reported earlier, is that we were losing about 19% of our water out of our well field. One of the things that we are signed up for is to conduct a real water loss audit from the Oklahoma Real Water Association, mainly look at our water losses as far as leaks and help detect leaks, and some meter analysis to make sure our meters are working correctly. This is a service that is free of charge and will help us pinpoint some sources of water loss and hopefully get those corrected relatively quickly. One of the problems is, since it is a free resource and it is good, it's probably going to be into 2019 before we get it done here. So we're a long way out before we get it done. And Mayor and council, that would be my report. I would be happy to answer, try to answer any questions that you may have.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Dunham?
On the Real Water District, is it -- are we writing something in there to look at the rates a little more often or something?
The way I've got it presented right now is, the way I've got it proposed right now is that it is tied to rates that we currently have in place, and the rates would be, would change every time we changed, the council changed those rates. And it was tied, they're tied together in that manner, and also allows us to look at a global increase. So basically, what I'm using, what I'm using right now, we keep our, we'd be tied to a rate that is currently in place, and any time that it went up, those rates would go up.
Any other questions for Mr. Dunham? All right, thank you, Joe Don. Item 7 is discussion and action on the election of two members to the Board of Trustees of the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group for three-year terms commencing July 1, 2018, and authorize the mayor to sign the ballot. So O-MAG has a board, and so the, and there are liability group. You can see the biographical sketches for those that are up for the two positions. I, I'm not going to say I'm very familiar with them, but I do know that Craig Stevenson is the city manager of Pocahonti City, and it says so here, but he's incumbent, and he currently serves as the chair on the O-MAG board. I would...
Him and Mike Bailey, I'll just say him and Mike Bailey both, I've known for a long time. They've served the board well. I do not know why they would not continue to serve the board well if we chose to cast our ballots for them. But I'd say the same, none of these people that I'm aware of, and I know several of them personally, they would all do a good job in those positions.
That's right. And I agree with that. Sometimes, when I look at these things, I try to think who would best represent the people that sit in your seats, and there is one council member, Jason Holman, who's out of Clinton, who, again, I don't see any reason why he wouldn't also be good, but Mike Bailey and Craig Stevenson both, those would be the three that would be in what I'm thinking, and I don't think there's anything wrong with what Mr. Bailey or Mr. Stevenson could do.
Do you need a motion with the individual names?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to vote on Mike Bailey and Craig Stevenson as individuals to fill expired positions on the O-MAG Board of Trustees and authorize the mayor to sign the ballot.
One second.
I have a motion by Dr. Haniford and a second by Mrs. Hamilton to elect Mike Bailey and Craig Stevenson to the Board of Trustees of the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group for three-year terms commencing July 1, 2018, and authorizing the mayor to sign the ballot. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Haniford?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Item 8, discussion and action on Resolution Number 2018-003, fiscal year 2017, 2018, budget amendment in the amount of $25,000. A grant from the Charles Morton Share Trust, Charles Morton Share Trust, to enhance Hatfield Park with electrical outlets. Joe Don.
Well, the Kids for Cops group through the Police Department requested for me to be able to apply for this grant, and I approved it. What it does is add electrical outlets throughout the park to allow for them to do more of their, more activities than what they've done in the past. It's very prohibitive for them to do things like the movie Under the Stars, put in some of those bouncy house toys without electrical outlets. Throughout the park, we get constrained to areas that we can run power cords. So this will go to enhance the entire park. Would be able to be used for other events, other than just the Kids for Cops programs. Fourth of July spectacular show would certainly benefit from these same electrical outlets. Any organization that does things down that park would benefit from this, so it's not just a one, a one organization deal. It will enhance the park altogether.
And this is, like I said, this is a grant that was provided to us. We need to accept the resolution to adjust the budget accordingly, and therefore, I would entertain a motion to do so.
My motion to approve Resolution Number 2018-003 is stated.
Second. I have a motion for Mr. Winters and a second by Dr. Haniford to approve Resolution Number 2018-003, a fiscal year 2017, '18 budget amendment in the amount of $25,000. A grant from the Charles Morton Share Trust to enhance Hatfield Park with electrical outlets. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
And if you see any of those gentlemen on the Share Trust, be sure to thank them for that. They do a whole lot in our community. I know you guys all know that, and we appreciate this quite a bit. Next item is discussion and action on the Second Amendment to the Red Carpet Landfill Inc. contract, which allows the city of Alba to utilize the landfill at Mino, Oklahoma. Joe Don.
Well, this is the second five-year contract we've done with, they're being presented from Red Carpet Landfill. It has been a good partnership between them and us through this point. I have no reason to, I have no expectation that it won't continue to be a good partnership. The only, the differences in the contracts are that, one is that we will, when we sign the contract party, it'll allow us to do, is to basically keep our tonnage fees the same next budget year as what they are this budget year, and that would be $20.49 per ton. And over the past five years, these fees have risen from about $15 a ton. We spend approximately $120,000 a year to be able to dump at Mino. I would recommend this contract. We do have representatives from Red Carpet Landfill. If they would like to add anything to the discussion, and maybe if you have any questions that you would like to try to answer. Brittany, and I'm not going to butcher her last name, so we're just going to call her Brittany tonight, is here to, will be able to answer any questions that specifically that you may have.
Yeah, and just to add to what Joe said, we waived the CPI for this year. There's really no changes to it. It's just a renewal extension essentially to the previous contract.
Council have any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
My motion to authorize the signing of the Second Amendment with Red Carpet Landfill incorporated for the disposal of solid waste in Mino, Oklahoma, and landfill.
Second.
Thank you, Brittany.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Dr. Haniford and a second by Mrs. Hamilton to approve the Second Amendment to the Red Carpet Landfill Inc. contract, which allows the city of Alba to utilize the landfill at Mino, Oklahoma. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Haniford?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number 10 is discussion and action on the appointment of Chad Fisher to the Alba Recreation Board for an unexpired term ending in October 2018. Matt Stratton needed to resign from the Red Park Board. Those of you who've been on the council a little while, when Mr. Fisher was on the council, he was council representative before he left his ward and had to resign from the council. He and I have had conversations over a period of time, that if there were ever an opportunity for him to serve again, that he would like to do so. This being a board that he has experience on, I am recommending that the council approve him to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Stratton. I'm happy to answer any questions or entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Chad Fisher to the Alba Recreation Board for an unexpired term ending in October 2018.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Hamilton and a second by Mr. Wallace to appoint Chad Fisher to the Alba Recreation Board for an unexpired term ending in October 2018. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Item 11, discussion and action to enter into executive session pursuant to 25OS307B2 to discuss contract negotiations of city business manager Joe Don Dunham.
My motion to enter into executive session pursuant to 25OS307B2 to discuss contract negotiations with city manager Joe Don Dunham.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Stelling to enter into executive session to discuss contract negotiations of city business manager Joe Don Dunham. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
All right. Go ahead and state. We will return now to regular session from executive session. And item 13 is action on contract negotiations of city business manager Joe Don Dunham, as discussed in executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to offer a new two-year contract, salary at $95,275, with a possible 3% increase during the second year with a favorable evaluation, and add one, one week, one additional week of annual leave for our city manager, Joe Don Dunham.
Second. I have a motion by Dr. Haniford and a second by Mr. Winters to approve, or to offer and approve, or approving. Okay. We've negotiated. Now, we're approving a two-year contract for $95,275 in the first year, with up to 3% increase in year two based on favorable appraisal, and an additional week of annual leave time. Is there any, is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Haniford?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Well, thank you Personnel Committee, thank you council members, and thank you, Joe Don. We're glad to have you on board for another couple of years and things keep going well. All right.
Item 14 is remarks and inquiries by citizens. If anybody has a comment, you may address the podium, tell us your name, and give you two minutes.
Wait until next minute.
Okay. By the time, by the time we get that comment, it ought to be good. Item 15 is remarks and inquiries by council members. Council members have anything? Well, if there is no further business, we will adjourn the city council meeting and open the Alba Utility Authority meeting. Please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Sherman?
Hamilton?
Here.
Haniford?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Item 3 is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desired to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda in place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 19, 2018, and B, approval of claims in the amount of $105,615.11, and payroll expenses of $62,035.61. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
My motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Stelling to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Number five is discussion and action on change order number two on the construction of a 1.5 million gallon water storage tank booster pump station in the amount of $12,243.15. I don't have my stuff pulled up yet, hang on.
Well, what this is, we discussed it last month a little bit, briefed you on it last month, was the change order that required, that was required to bring the foundation up to code as far as to be able to support our tank based on the geotechnical information that was gathered. It would increase the total settlement to, for the tank would be 3.5, 3, 3 foot 5 inches. That's not written, I don't think that's right. But basically, what it is, we had to, we had to excavate an additional four feet that was not in the contract and filling, and upgrade the footing on that. That additional increase for that foundation enhancement was $22,026.30. But trying to accommodate for that, there was an interior tank ladder that we felt was not needed. And so, we've authorized, it authorized the removal of that, which was a reduction of $9,337.23 feet. We, because we increased the discharge piping size from four inches to six inches, increased the cost by $2,354.08. And then, we reduced, we have taken out the painting that was called out for the bid for exposed piping in the pump station. We will self-perform this painting if required. This was a reduction in the contract of $2,800 for a total change of $12,243.15. This $12,243.15 does increase the construction cost. That does not increase our project cost because this money will come out of the contingency money we have planned.
So basically, there's two increases and two reductions. It doesn't, we've still borrowed enough money to do all this. And we need to do, the main part of this is based on the compaction studies that we just absolutely have to do. The other things have been put in place to help-
Offset the cost.
Is there any questions for Mr. Dunham? Thought I'd entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve change order number two on the construction of 1.5 million gallon water storage tank booster pump station in the amount of $12,243.15.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Stelling to approve change order number two on the construction of a 1.5 million gallon water storage tank booster pump station in the amount of $12,243.15. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
We'll adjourn the utility authority meeting and open the Economic Development Authority meeting. When we're ready, please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Sherman?
Hamilton? Here.
Haniford?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Item 3 is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AEDA meetings will be approved by one vote of the board. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 19, 2018. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $70,247.27 and payroll expenses of $11,021.40. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion by Mrs. Hamilton and a second by Dr. Haniford to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.